Okay, it's seven o'clock. We'll call to order this special meeting of council of July 31. Are you able, Janice, are you able to hear the back? Okay, thank you. Before proceeding, just make a statement. Councillor Monley informed me earlier today that he will not be participating in tonight's council meeting and asked me to read the following statement on his behalf. As you are aware, some members of the community filed a complaint with the Ombudsman's person's office suggesting that I might be in a conflict of interest due to the fact that I own a business in Lord Gibson's and advocated for economic opportunities such as the George Hotel before being elected to council. I don't believe that I have a conflict of interest in this matter, and I continue to believe that. However, in order to preserve the integrity of the application review process, I will not be participating in discussions on this matter until I seek a legal opinion. All right. Motion to approve the agenda, please. Councillor Larriat, Councillor Sanjanko, all in favor, that's carried. And one motion to adopt the minutes from the July 26 meeting. Councillor Sanjanko, Councillor Larriat, all in favor, and that's carried. All right, let's move straight to 4.1, the George Hotel environmental development permit, and we'll hear from the Director of Climate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. See if we're close enough for, to be clear, on the subject. The first report is about the environmental development permit, and just to give you some background why this is what's forward to council. It is environmental, geotechnical, and aquifer DPs are normally dedicated to staff through a Bible that we have for that, delegation of forest Bible. In cases of environmental development permits, there is a catch, and the Bible says that if there's significant environmental enhancement proposed, then council is considering those development permits. And in this case, because we're dealing with a non-contaminated site, we, as staff, we felt that was proven to consider that significant environmental enhancement, and therefore this permit is in front of you today. In the report, we're explaining how this works in environmental development permit in this situation, and this site has been investigated a couple of times. First time, there was an environmental assessment done, this was in 2003, another one in 2004, in 2012, one that's submitted for the town at the time of the application, actually in 2013, it was submitted, but it was done in 2012. It was submitted as part of the George Hotel applications, but more recently, we have had a detailed site investigation, and it's called Completed by Keystone Environmental. Under the guidelines of the development permit, and that's where we look at from the town's perspective, key requirement is to have the involvement of qualified environmental professionals. In this case, we do have the documentation from two of them. One specifically on habitat protection, so a geologist, and the other one specifically to deal with the site contamination. First of all, the foreshore habitat, so the assessment that was done a couple of years ago identified and estimated 300 square meters of longs habitat into shorelines and proposed to mitigate it by creating 500 square meters new habitat, and that's outlined in the staff report in figure one. And figure two gives details that are also added to the report, sorry, to the permit, and they specify what kind of plantings would need to be planted there. Then the second part is the remediation. Our guidelines require a detailed assessment to be done by a qualified professional. It has been done last year, and over the course of the last couple of months, a remediation plan has also been put together. There are contaminants on site and the foreshore area. They are results from fuel storage from the past, marine repairs, but also creosel findings, and the types of contamination there on site are summarized much definitely in the report, but there are metals, triple tilting, and hydrocarbons, and that is summarized in figure three as to where exactly they are and the extent. As part of the detailed site investigation, it was also investigated whether the groundwater, the aquifer, was affected by this contamination, and that's fortunately not the case at all. This contamination is only in the shallow depth of the surface, and is nowhere near the aquifer itself. In terms of remediation of such a contaminated site, we play a very limited role, especially because we're also opted out of the contaminated site regulation. The Ministry of Environment is the one that oversees remediation and has the whole remediation regulation around that, and the remediation plan that was submitted to the ministry in June was approved by the ministry in July. Turning back to our development permit, what is the key content that is raised for in that permit is how the remediation takes place and how works in the foreshore take place, and that's why the key document behind the development permit is a construction environmental management plan, and that outlines how the different contractors that are involved in the project need to deal with the habitat from the ocean and the removal of contaminants. That summarizes my report on the environmental development permit, so as staff, you're satisfied that the applicant has satisfied the guidelines from the RCP, and we're asked for approval on this permit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. So just to be clear, attached to your report is the Keystone Environmental, is the remediation plan, which is quite extensive, and that's been supplied to the Ministry of Environment, and that was reviewed by the ministry, and the ministry approved that plan, is that correct? Okay. Thank you. All right. Members of council, have any points of clarification or any queries on this one? Councillor Sanjanko.
Thank you for a very thorough report, Andre. I just have one point that I'd like to clarify, if I could. One point that I'd like to have clarified, if I could, and it's regarding the certificate of compliance. In the staff report, and I think it's just towards the very end of the report, you talk about that our development permit requires confirmation of the completion of remediation, and that the certificate of compliance will serve as that confirmation that this remediation has successfully been completed. And then, when I was reading the letter from the ministry at the very end of the environmental DP report, it says that it will not be a requirement of this site owner to obtain a ministry legal instrument, i.e. a certificate of compliance, once remediation has been So it doesn't sound like they would be issuing one, so I'm just wondering if you could clarify those two points and how they relate to each other.
Okay, very, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, certificate of compliance is the most common tool used to sign off on the cleanup of a site, that one was issued, for example, the Shell site, next to Morris Reach. I noticed that too, in the letter from the ministry, that they apparently have other ways to sign off on the completion of the remediation. So in the permit itself, we simply ask the applicant to provide confirmation from the ministry, once they are done with their completion, but the ministry has a couple of other tools as well that they could use to sign off on the remediation, so that's why I wanted to be able to, yeah, get between the two.
Councillor Larriat.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, full confidence in the very robust process around the county sites regulation, and the ministry staff have experienced it firsthand, so I mean, I think this remediation plan is sound. We, as a town, as council and staff, we need to make sure we're aware of how it interacts with the geotech and the aquifer, because I think that's, the aquifer is really what we're most trying to protect here, and we could talk about that a little bit more in 4.2, but as far as the county sites, I'm comfortable and confident that with the ministry approval, it's well executed.
And also, just to clarify, in your report, you've indicated that there will be two qualified environmental professionals that will be monitoring the process, so one to the habitat and one with contamination, is that correct? Any other queries or points, Councillor Larriat?
Look at the recommendations, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, second then. By Councillor Larriat, second Councillor Sanjanko, all in favor then? That's carried. All right, let's move to 4.2, the staff report on the geotech and aquifer review results.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll summarize the report again. You also have Newman here, who works engineering, for questions that may arise. This report summarizes an extensive review process that we've gone through with the applicant, starting in 2014 and 15, when we did the review for the rezoning. As you may recall, we already did somewhat peer review at that time with Waterline, and back then, it was called Fern Leaverton. And that resulted in some design changes to make sure that the underside of the building would stay clear from the aquifer and the layers above it. At the time, we accepted those design changes from the summer of 2015, but we also agreed with the applicant that we would do further review, including peer review, and peer review is reviewed by a second opinion, basically experts, independent experts from the applicant. We agreed to do that as part of the development agreement before we would get to the building permit. And that's where the process is now substantially complete, and we're wrapping up the reports for that. After the rezoning, which was approved in 2015, in 2016 and 17, the applicant did further investigations on several occasions, different types of investigations, to collect more information about the geology of the site, particularly in relation to the aquifer. We also continued the peer review process with the two parties that we also used in 2014 and 15, and that resulted in a lot of issues being addressed, and a key thing that we focused at was on the foundation itself. How does the foundation get constructed, and how does it, how is that done in a way that protects our aquifer? When we got closer to the end of the process, the key question that remained was about the proposed technique, because the technique of the foundation, the foundation is fairly shallow, it's virtually perched over the layers that protect the aquifer, but to do that, you need to do something called ground improvement, or also called deep mixing, involves mixing soil materials with the ground. And our peer reviewers that we used to that day felt uncomfortable about that mainly because they're also not uncomfortable, not familiar with that technique. So we sought out further expertise, and first of all, we selected a peer reviewer for the town that is a specialist in ground improvement and deep mixing, but we also insisted and required that the applicant added expertise to their design team, and they retained a firm called Ishwood, which is also an engineering firm that specialized in ground improvement, to look specifically at how that foundation would be constructed. Through that process, over the last, and this is the last half year, basically, the process to construct that foundation has been, what's it called, more detailed and explored further in more detail, and changes to the initial idea have been made. And one of the key features of the current proposed approach that both our peer reviewer and the new expert on their, on the George's team can support, is an approach where the improvements take place in small increments. There's a field trial that's done before, there's extensive monitoring during the trial, but also during the actual ground improvement, and there is a robust contingency plan in place. And the contingency plan is something else that, yes, town required and found to be really important, because even though the geotechnical engineer is confident that this can be done and will be done in an effective way, there's always this chance, what if, and we wanted to make sure that whoever's going to do the work on site is completely prepared for any whatevs. And so the contingency plan makes sure, for example, that there is extensive ongoing monitoring during the process, but also if there are problems that occur, that there is equipment already on site readily available to intervene, and that way, there's also effective risk management and what's. As I said, the, those reports are now being finalized, and we're looking at issuing those two development permits, one for geotechnical hazards and one for aquifer protection. Those two permits are reviewed by staff, there's more role for council under the delegation Bible, and this staff report summarizes what is the process that we follow over the last two and a half years there. Practically what we've had on the ground is first site remediation, then the ground improvement and deep mixing will take place, and that will be followed by actual construction. To make sure that people know what is going on, we've also thought about how to communicate the results of this whole process, and also thought about how we could make information available. So of course, when, once the geotechnical report is finalized, then the reviews and acceptance files, it will be made available to staff and council, but also through the website to the public. We also prepared another whiteboard video that will summarize the highlights of this whole review process. And that way, oh, and the other part of it is on site, and that's more also part of the upcoming construction management, go to make sure that we keep also posted on site to assign probably what is going on inside at the moment, demolition, remediation, or the ground improvements. Once we get to the construction, it will be pretty obvious where we are in this process, but those first stages, people want to know what's going on there. Yeah, that summarizes our report there, and it's more of an update, this report, but we're here to answer any questions you may have, and our recommendation is to simply receive the report. Thank you.
All right, so those permits then would be issued by staff once you're satisfied that all of the conditions have been met and settled by our peer reviewers and the other engineering firms that have been added to this project. Okay. All right, questions or points of clarification, Councillor Larriat?
I want to clarify that there's a mention of final geotechnical report in here, and just wanted to clarify, even I recognize this is not being asked for a decision here, but I'm guessing that report is going to be heavily scrutinized, so I just want to make sure it'll be posted on that, to the same work website as all the other documents and stuff.
Yes, with that, for sure.
Maybe a question for the CAO. I'm just wondering if you could speak just a tiny bit more about the flow of communication to the public from here on forward. Andre did cover a couple of really key points, but I know that we are working on a video right now, just when, what that video covers and when it'll be done, and also just what the public can kind of expect in terms of the flow of communication going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. So from a communication perspective, we will continue to do public dissemination of having all the workers in one spot, and staff reports and background documents as well. So these three aspects of that, sort of the public information on mostly on a website base, but on site itself, through either the construction permit or the service agreements, there are requirements to publicly display and update the community where the project is at, and from a site boarding perspective, we've also asked for appropriate measures to be taken so that there's viewing points that people can access in a sense of what's actually happening on the site, as well as information lines, its point of contact and so on, on the developer's side of things. So I think either on site or on the town's website would probably be the two main points of access for information and inquiries, and then on the performance on website, I, we don't necessarily rely on that per se, but would expect to have information as well of where we're sitting.
Councillor Larriat? Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So just think this deserves a minute or two because the aquifer is under discussion, even though we're just receiving this. I found myself reflecting back to our very colorful meeting of May 2015, when we got, I certainly did, and I think a lot of people got a lot of comfort out of the review of a hydrogeologist named Gene Cho, who explained the interaction between the aquifer and the contaminants, and I think that was, that was really valuable. At the time, I was really concerned that there'd be, that the project team have some proven experience with this kind of, these kinds of techniques and these kinds of ground conditions, and I think it really is due to the hard work of staff over two years plus that we're actually, we seem to be there. So that's all positive. I think, I mean, from a due diligence or oversight point of view, I just wanted to mention that when I look at the final geotech, even though it's delegated staff, and I think that's, that's correct in terms of it's highly technical, and there's a lot of technical moving pieces here, but I will be looking for a similar type of hydrogeologist signing off on that, on the contingency plan, because I think, you know, unlikely to ever have to use this contingency plan, but I'd like to hear that a hydrogeologist has endorsed it. I assume that will be part of the final geotech report, and also the interaction, I think, staff have got it this far, I just want to make sure that we're not letting up here, the interaction between the contaminated sites piece, where you're basically constantly executing until you find no more contamination, and the limitations of how far we can date with aquifer and aquitard being protected. So I'm just mentioning that that's what I'll be looking for in the final report, and I'd like to just emphasize that all these teams have to, we have to, staff will continue, unfortunately have to work hard to make sure all these teams are talking to one another because there's quite a few different areas of expertise here, and if he is going to be coordinating them, I, you know, to a certain degree, we have to believe that the project team, the construction project team, and they've got an construction management plan, will be that, but I just recognize that town staff and maybe some good council have to make sure that we are, are making sure everybody's talking to one another, because the whole knows it's safe.
Thank you, it's a very good points, and I'm sure that we'll see that as part of the geotech report eventually, if staff gets finalized. All right, if there's nothing else, then just ask for a motion to receive that report. Then Councillor Larriat, Councillor Sanjanko, all in favor? That's carried. Okay, we'll move down to inquiries. Again, just remind you, if you have an inquiry, please take your name and address, and make it restricted to an inquiry as opposed to a submission. So just raise your hand if you have an inquiry.
So Suzanne Sanger, I live at 889 Chamberlain Road. I'm also representing the Gibson Alliance Business and Community Society that has filed an appeal to the Environmental Appeals Board, based in Ministry of Environment, around this inadequate remedial plan provided to the Ministry of Environment, and apparently seen by all of you. And yet, here you are issuing approvals to issue a permit for an inadequate remedial plan, and, you know, we've, you've been challenged, and I'm not sure how much the elected people really are aware, or how much the community is aware, that you've been challenged a number of times on the legality of the issuance of these permits while there's a zoning freeze on this site. And I heard you say earlier that the Ministry of Environment has approved the remedial plan, therefore, you feel, it seems to me you're saying you feel confident that you won this permit. Is that correct? Are you suggesting that the Ministry of Environment has signed off on that, therefore you have justification to issue this permit?
We're not going to comment very much on that, because as you just indicated, the town was served with a notice late on Friday, that was started by your organization, Gibson's Alliance, making an appeal to the Environmental Appeal Board with respect to the ministry's approval of the remedial plan. So we won't comment on that because those proceedings are ongoing.
If it's not a proceeding, Mayor, it's not a proceeding with the Town of Gibson's, JABC filed with the Environmental Appeals Board, so it's a Ministry of Environment Board, it's not the Town of Gibson. So there is no, there's no rationale for the Town of Gibson's not to answer the question unless you're trying to hide behind something, so I would really appreciate an answer to the question, please.
Okay, we've heard your inquiry, I've given you an answer, so we'll move on to the next inquiry.
Answer the question. My next question is, how much of the tax payers' money do you intend to waste on legal action against the town because you keep making these poor decisions?
You're the ones that are causing the expense to the town.
You, mister.
All right. Who's next with an inquiry?
Answer the question now.
I'd like to, I'd like to answer the question, please, from my point of view. Absolutely, the, the subject experts at the Ministry of Environment should be the ones, have indicated their support for this remedial plan, and I find it, I think it would be very odd if any town staff without that depth of expertise were to suddenly say, well, we think that all the, all the experts at the Ministry of Environment are incorrect, and we have a different opinion. If there was something outstanding here, but there isn't, this is a fairly straightforward letter from Vince Hanameyer saying endorsing the remedial plan, I think that speaks for itself, and the Town of Gibson's has been following that. I don't see us inserting contaminated sites expertise, certainly from any of our staff, or we're not, we're not trained with that level, that's why we rely on a senior level government to provide that, so I think that's your answer.
You're here. You're here. You've had your, you've had more than your two minutes, so please take a seat, and we'll move on to the next.
You're aware there's a risk to Gibson's.
That's enough, in the same year, you don't even live in the town, you don't pay taxes here, please move on and let our residents have a say, let our residents have a say.
You want your aquifer risk people to your home or...
Good evening, your worship, Mr. Mayor, and the council members that were left with at the meeting. I have a...
Sorry, could you just say your name first?
Yes, my name is Roger Swickus, I live on the Bluff and Gibson's, I've been a taxpayer here, quite valid, I hope I'm allowed to speak, for the last 16 years. I have a couple of questions about a process, I guess, and they're related to some recent comments of the mayor's, where it's been recently quoted in the press, and also at the last meeting that I attended, which was a couple of meetings ago, the mayor makes these references to public process and public hearings. Being curious about this, after the last meeting, I wrote a letter to your corporate officer, Sabina Williams, and asked if she could tell me at what meetings during the George Hotel and condominium complex process, there was an opportunity for the citizens to ask questions of the mayor and council. Corporate Officer Williams sent me a letter and gave me two dates. One of these was September 24th in 2015, and one was the following October 1st. One of these was September 24th in 2015, and one was the following October 1st. At the September 24th meeting, there were no counselors present, nor was the mayor. It was merely a presentation by the developer where they had a number of booths and they were telling us what it is they proposed to do. Some of you may recall, there was someone so indignant about it, they wrote the paper about they went home and burnt their t-shirt, I think, in protest, if that helps you recall. So if those are the two instances cited as the opportunity to ask questions, oh yes, the other one was the October 1st public hearing. Referred to throughout the process, as I recall, the mayor would not accept any questions from the public with regard to the George, and we should all await the public hearing when we have this opportunity. Well, on October 1st, we all went to the public hearing. Everyone was afforded five minutes to make a presentation. There was no opportunity to ask any questions, no questions were even answered at that meeting. So I'm wondering what it is that the mayor is referring to by this public consultation process, and if he can give me a date of a meeting at which members of the public were afforded the opportunity to ask questions of the mayor and council on the George Hotel condominium project. Thank you.
I think really all I can say, sir, Swickus, is that over, actually over the last three or four years, that this process has been working its way through, much as we're doing right now, we've had inquiries at numerous meetings that have been responded to. So there's been lots and lots of inquiries at meetings and answers given, so that would be my answer. Okay, is there anybody else that has any inquiry at the scene?
All right, thank you. Trying to stand out of the way here. Servant?
Andrej Sobolewski. Yeah, I'm an environmental counsel. I, the, where do I start? The, the decisions are made fairly quickly and easily about approving the permit, and the scrutiny is, for scrutiny, council is relying on experts that have passed a judgment on the safety or likelihood of the proposed remedial plan or for the Aquifer. These very same experts are actually different experts. In 2015, told us we can't excavate below a certain depth, 1.5 meter in one part of the property and 0.5 meter in another part of the property, because excavating below this would put our Aquifer at risk. Those were the conclusions of the experts hired by the developer and the peer reviewers hired by town in 2015. And that was enshrined in the EPA, right? Now we hear from two of the experts who say it'll be fine to excavate below those limits, we'll be fine to remove the fill and the peat overlying the next layer that is deeper than those excavation limits as part of the deep mixing process. And if there's anything that happens, then we get a contingency plan in place. Staff reported on this, and staff did not say the result of this risk assessment was that the risk was negligible in digging below that limit that the town has set, but rather what staff reported was, should anything happen, we have contingency measures in place. No one of us here in the room has heard any reason why one group of experts in 2015 said we can't dig below that layer, below that certain depth, and then in 2017, another group of experts concerned with deep mixing said it's okay to dig below that. That is a cause for concern for me. In addition, hold on, what's your inquiry? I am coming to it, please. In addition, Keystone Environmental did not review this risk assessment. They write in the remedial plan, we've been told by Horizon that they intend to dig below this excavation limit, therefore it'll be okay to dig below this excavation limit, even though in an early report, they wrote, we can't dig that far down because it'll jeopardize the integrity of the Aquifer. Keystone wrote that. And then subsequently, they reversed themselves on the word of Horizon. And then lastly, Vincent Hannemeyer with the Ministry of Environment did not refer to their own experts on this particular matter. They said, the Keystone report said it would be fine, therefore it should be fine. So I'm finding myself in a situation where one set of experts hired by town and the developer earlier this year said it'd be okay to dig a depth, that reverses a previous decision saying it's not okay to dig a depth. And they're not saying that there's no risk in doing so, they're saying we have measures in place in case there's a problem. To my way of understanding this, I'm coming to my question. To my way of understanding this, there is a measure of risk in undertaking this excavation. And as a council, you, Mr. Rowe, and counselors ought to consider what are the consequences for town of accepting this risk? And I think it is prudent to require some measures from the developer or anybody undertaking these activities to protect the town. So for instance, the town could, and I ask you, would you consider demanding of either the consultant doing the remediation work or the owner of the property to post a bond in case there was something untoward that happened, in case there was a problem with the Aquifer, and then suddenly, the measures that they propose are inadequate for dealing with it, and then the costs go up because it didn't work as intended? That was my question.
Okay, so I have to turn to staff to respond to that.
Sir, it's a decision for you to make, not staff.
All the staff has been working with the engineers and the experts on this for the last two years, I have a one thirty one.
So Andrej, could you restate your question there again, one more time?
Yes. The preamble, in the preamble, I wanted to emphasize that there's a measure of risk in excavation. Given this risk and given the responsibility of town, is the town prepared to require a bond? Should there be an outcome that is beyond, you know, if the mitigation measures don't work out, if ends up being more costly? How will the town deal with that?
Thank you. I'd like to make a, probably some response to this because there's one thing that Mr. Sobolewski marked there. There's an assumption there, I also saw an article online today, that this minimum excavation depth is in our development permit guidelines for the Aquifer. It's not. We have a description of in what situations we require assessments. And generally, that is for any excavation, and for single families, only if it's deeper than 1.5 meters. So there's no set limit, but in certain areas, we do review the site conditions before we allow excavation to happen. Secondly, I'm going to hand it over to Dave to talk about this discrepancy that Mr. Sobolewski sees between the remediation method of removing versus geotechnical limits.
Mr. Mayor, just some, although we kind of ended up with one question there, I think that there's several comments there that are worth responding to. Number one, yes, there is coordination between the professionals on site. In fact, the Horizon, the geotechnical engineer will be overseeing the excavation, be taking care of the excavation, whereas Keystone will be doing the testing and monitoring and so on. So the excavation falls under one contractor. Excuse me. Additional field investigation will provide some more information and fill in some gaps as to tighten up or to refine those areas and depths that can be excavated. The, there are, there's more than one option as far as the contaminants go. One, there's a certain amount of excavation that is going to be, is envisaged to be about two meters deep, localized to the patrolling contaminants, and those can be excavated or left in place. And if they're left in place, there is a way to, through the deep cell mixing, that isolates them and contains them. If it is determined that the removal is to take place, there is a way of doing that as well without actually physically, without digging a hole, and that's called, I'm trying to remember the exact word, the slurry, it's basically, sorry? The, yeah, there's a way to kind of basically replace the soil. So I think that's, that covers that.
And then in response to the questions from Mr. Sobolewski there, Paul Dink, our approach to this risk is different. We have it proven in place, once they're finalized, we have the experts that are going to work on the site. It's their responsibility and their professional reputations are at stake to do this right and to deal with it appropriately. There are regular insurance requirements for contractors that do these kind of projects, but we don't collect a specific bond for what Mr. Sobolewski is referring to.
Okay, any other inquiries?
Are you going to answer the question? That's my question.
Okay, there's another one.
My name's Judith Bonhof, I live at 689 Road. I've been living near Gibson's for 14. I'm going to make it quick, I'd rather be on my deck drinking wine. Okay, I'm sure all of us will. All right, so number one, am I to understand that if the Aquifer is breached, we don't have proper insurance that'll cover it? There's a breach in Vancouver that's been going on for a year. What kind of coverage do we have? Can you answer that question? I have coverage for my house, I hope you guys have good coverage for our Aquifer. Water is so important. Look at the drought we're having. We cannot risk our Aquifer.
Sure, we're well aware of that.
Well, I know, but a building on top of it. That's a good thing.
I can just, Mr. Mayor? Yeah? The, there's been a lot of publicity, and I think, in a way, very good publicity in regards to the Vancouver Aquifer issue. It certainly brings to light the importance of careful construction practices when you're working in the vicinity of an Aquifer. And to compare this process to Vancouver is somewhat misleading. The Vancouver incident, there was no risk assessment done, there was, the contractor appeared unaware of the impacts of drilling into the Aquifer. They had a somewhat panicked response to hitting the Aquifer, and obviously, no contingency plans in place. We've been working for literally years on all of that to ensure that the risk is minimized on this site. And there is, with any construction project, regardless of where you are, there is no project that is without risk. We've got lots of buildings in this area, and everything we do, from the one we get up in the morning, involves some sort of risk. And staff are satisfied that we've got the lowest risk, or that the developer has come up with the lowest risk method of constructing on this site.
I'm not sure that's an answer. I need to know if there's insurance for this. Could there be insurance? I mean, I get blood insurance for my house, right? It's their insurance, it'll pay out all the damage. If you're worried about the Town of Gibson's paying out for some law case, some legal, you know, case, this is like huge compared to that, huge. The hidden costs on this development are horrible. I don't even want to think about it.
Thank you. Any further inquiries?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would just like to, can you hear me?
Yeah, just need to state your name and address.
I'm sorry. My name is Diana Robertson, and I live in Hopkins Landing on Point Road. I think it's been great that staff has clarified a lot of very key questions tonight. Thank you very much, and I'd really like to applaud you for the 18 months to two years of work that you've put in to create very extensive reports and to cover a lot of due diligence. So on behalf of a lot of people that are here, I'd just like to say thank you very much, it's very impressive. And also, just a question on behalf, even though I live in Hopkins Landing, I'm basically been in Gibson's for years and pay taxes, a lot of people here are taxpayers as well, and I'd just like to query the latest dismissal of the Human Rights Tribunal with Good Dorothy Riddle, and I noticed it was in CBC Online News, and it's quite obvious, and it was obvious from the discussion earlier, that this is really an unnecessary claim, especially for this project that shows very clearly that it is ADA accessible in many respects. So I'd just like to know if anybody else is going to be on the hook for a lot of these taxpayer dollars, and possibly to the tune of 80,000 to $200,000 in claims?
Thank you. Well, there will be a report from our staff in the fall as to what expenses the town has incurred in responding to these various applications that have been made to a number of original bodies, and we'll make it clear what that cost has been to the town.
Thank you.
Any further inquiries? Forward, state your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Barry Heans. I am a resident of Gibson's. I've lived here for 12 years, pay taxes in the Town of Gibson's. In fact, I moved to Gibson's specifically because of drinking water and the Aquifer. And as far as the George project, you know, I feel like I've got friends on both sides, you know? I really don't give a shit if the George is built the way it is or whatever, but I am concerned about government and bureaucrats who risk the taxpayers' money, okay? If there's a breach of this Aquifer, I don't want to have to spend thousands of dollars to fix it, okay? The proponent should be responsible for that, okay? And by the way, you know, the people against the George, a lot of them I disagree with too. Like, there were people that tried to tell Klaus how to build this hotel. It's his hotel, if he wants it to be six stories high, I don't care. But I just feel like if the Aquifer is breached and it costs millions, hundreds of millions, whatever, the developer should have to pay for that, and you guys need to make that happen, okay? And I also feel like we have a new government in B.C. I've talked to the Greens and the N E P about changing the ballot initiative process, and they're pretty interested, and I want that process changed retroactively. Okay, so how many of you that are for the George, raise your hands? Thank you. Raise your hands. How many of you are willing to pay for a breach? I don't want to pay for it, okay? So what I'm saying is, the council needs to require the developer... So what I'm saying is, the council needs to require the developer to pay for any damage that's done to the aquifer. And you need to be aware that the ballot initiative process is probably going to change in this province because there's a new government, and it will change in a way so that citizens can vote on issues like this, okay? And I just want to make sure that you all are doing this responsibly and honestly, because if you're not doing it responsibly and honestly, the new ballot initiative process may allow the citizens to even put you in jail, okay? So take this seriously, do it properly. And I don't care if the George is built, I'm fine with it, but I don't want my acreage of aquifer damaged. And so that's my question is, please make sure the developer ensures this so that the citizens don't have to pay if it screws up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heans. That's wonderful.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, through you, judging by some of the questions, it might appear that town isn't proud about insurance per se. But I do want to just clarify that the permits that are issued by the town require liability insurance. And the developer are the ones that assume all of the risk with their proposed works. And all the professionals that are involved with that, their stance in essence implies their own insurance risk as well. There's a backup plan that has been put in place. There's four or five peer reviewers that have been done. There's involvement of DFO, MOE, in terms of, as it relates to that process, and the peer reviewers, as I mentioned as well. So from our end of things, we have done what we are required to do and what we felt was necessary to make sure that the risk is as low as possible. And the option that was being proposed is the lowest risk option based on the advice of all the peer reviewers that were back. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Store. I live at 400 Stewart Road. I'm an owner and a taxpayer in Gibson's. I have a very short question. It requires an answer, because I need to know it. The monitor of the site, I heard tonight, is going to be Keystone, is that true? Is Keystone going to be monitoring the remedial, remedial environmental on the site?
Okay, so I'll just refer to staff.
Okay, okay. Is this the same Keystone that wrote on the certificate for the environmental ministry? Is that the same one that put down that there was no vote preparing being done at the arena where the site is? Is that the same Keystone?
I'm not sure which report you're referring to, but he's an employer, a firm that has been involved in this site. And he has to refer to this report.
Environmental certificate?
Site profile was submitted to the ministry.
Yes, sent to the ministry.
It's a very detailed question that I don't have an answer for.
Okay, okay, then. Is the same Keystone that also failed to recognize that there was a tributaldom on the site when he filed his certificate?
Absolutely not. Keystone Environmental did identify TBT. That's why identified decommissioning of the works. That is a part of the environmental monitor, a very nonswell that they're doing. Thank you.
Yeah, I referred to the previous certificate, not the latter one. The first one was sent in that the GWDA lawyer referred to. Anyway, that's answered my question. It's the same man or firm that missed a couple of items on the environmental. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Store. Any further inquiries?